If you could, if you could begin, come into your seats and let's settle down. I'd like to get this started in about two minutes. Just so you know, we will not be taking any more cards. I want to give you, I want everybody to settle and thank you again for understanding. We'll let everybody get inside. I'll start in about a minute. I think we pretty much have everybody in here, so if you don't mind, would you mind if we go ahead and start a couple of minutes early? Are you fine with that? What's that? Okay, Mr. Swindell.
Hi, Bob Swindell. As a lifetime asthmatic and the father of three grade school children that love the outdoors, I'm very aware of and concerned about air quality and traffic safety. I'm no fan of diesel exhaust, but I am a fan of local public safety and educational services and economic development that is required to fund them. Norco sits at the intersection of the 91 and 15 freeways where thousands of diesel trucks pass every day, often idling in traffic or pulling off to fuel up or take a break. And yet, due to improvements in electrochemical filtering technology and ever more stringent state and federal regulations, our local air quality index remains relatively stable with a good to moderate rating on most days. I do not believe that the proposed development before you would result in any measurable increase in pollutants or any increased risk to our children's health. However, this project would result in a measurable increase in revenues for the city. Revenues our city desperately needs to fund the services which keep our families safe and educated. In addition to the development fees, infrastructure improvements, and incremental tax revenue that would benefit Norco as a result of this project, there is also the very real potential for the development of a commercial refueling station which would result in substantial perpetual tax revenue for the city. Additionally, you cannot discount the jobs created by this project, both immediate and sustained, and the indirect tax revenue generated by those employees. In the midst of the worst global and local economic downturn in 80 years, the city of Norco cannot in good conscience turn down a revenue opportunity such as this. The fears that have been expressed that this project will somehow turn Norco into Mariloma or any other city with hundreds of acres of trucking and warehousing facilities is just unfounded. Norco simply doesn't have the appropriately zoned undevelopment land to support any more projects of this scale. We should be grateful that we have this opportunity and allow this property to be developed to its fullest economic potential to the benefit of all Norco citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Swindell. Next, number, is that 39?
Forty.
Number forty. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I have three pages that I was going to talk about, but I'm going to summarize it really short here. I would like to ask all of you, as well as the Alair Group, wherever they may be, would they like to live across the street from this facility and look at this block wall or this concrete wall? And yes, it has a beautiful horse trail, but would you really want to live there? The other item I would like to stipulate is, yes, as a homeowner, I have rights just like everybody else does. There are 7,000 rooftops here in Norco. They have rights. The majority behind me are sitting here saying they don't want this project. I urge you to vote no for this project. And most importantly, health issues. Our children's health is at risk. And tonight, there was a lady that said there was a DNA document that is included that the air pollution caused by particles caused by diesel, excuse me, the diesel particles, it's a health issue. Are we on our way to another Hinckley? I ask you, do not vote for this. Vote it out. Thank you.
Number forty-one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Green.
Hi, Bill.
Problem with being number forty-one is, most of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I just want to make it perfectly clear that I'm 100% behind all of those who are conforming, who have opposed this project. We've seen lots of pretty pictures tonight, pretty pictures of buildings and pretty horse trails and everything, but I have yet to see an artist's rendition of what an intersection like Hidden Valley and Hamner or Second and Hamner would look like when you've got additional truck traffic on there. And we've not mentioned Sixth Street, which is also access to a posted truck route, which will also be impacted. So I am totally against this thing, and I hope you are too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Forty-two. Good evening, how are you? Good.
I'm Susan Leving. I've been a resident of Norco for 20 years. And I had a lot of stuff written out too that I thought I'd reduce it down to my little written notes. And I listened to the presentation and I thought, you know, everything sounds great on paper, but that's all it is, sounding great on paper. And I'm so disheartened at seeing Norco being the developers' experimental heaven. We have been through the Wiley Lab fiasco. We've been through the Norco mansion expansion that turned that area into a virtual foreclosure heaven. And those are just a few of the recent Norco development attempts. I believe that the Planning Commission made a wise decision originally to vote this down, and I think we should stay with that. They had all the same information. And I'd like to just say that Norco is valuable. I come from Orange County. I couldn't afford to buy horse property in Orange County. I came out here. I love it. I suffered through the 91 drive to in front to live in Norco. And I would hate to see all those trucks that I can't stand to be near on the 91 freeway here in my own backyard. The people are valuable, and I just don't want to see another quick experimental disaster happen. I don't think the Alair people are going to be living anywhere near here, yet they are going to turn that area into an industrial tenement housing complex. I really hope that you all vote no on it, and we find a better way to deal with that land. Thank you.
Thank you. Number forty-three.
Hi, I live in Norco on Pacific Avenue off of Second Street. And every morning I drive down Second Street under the freeway up to Hillsong for reasons. About 7:30, and I see these four or five trucks parked in front of the egg ranch, and they're idling, and I wondered, what the heck are they doing? The egg ranch is closed, you know? And they almost ran me off the road once. They don't want to stop there. They do their own thing, and I think if there's a million trucks running around there, also, there's another point. When a truck comes to a red light in the intersection, how long does it take that truck to get across the intersection? Well, supposing there's three trucks ready to go across Hamner to the egg ranch? Well, no cars are going to get by them on Second Street, because it takes them forever to get to start their thing going. It takes them, everyone knows that. You get behind a truck, you might as well get out, get somewhere. And another thing is, the 91 freeway was sold to Fast Track. I drove the 91 freeway when it was wide open and thought, oh, it's wonderful to come down to Norco. Well, finally, they sold half the freeway. We don't need to sell Norco out to some thing like this with a million trucks. And I don't see how it's going to accommodate it with these two off-ramps. That's all. Please vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. Number forty-four. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you guys doing?
Well.
I'm against this. I am a truck driver. And with the traffic that is going to be brought into the area for the horses, everybody's done the noise thing. That's fine. The problem is the noise on the horses. You get these drivers that run around with their brake brakes on, they run with their air brakes on, they hit the air brakes. They have their tendency of hitting the horn when they're irritated with people. That spooks the horses. You got a spooked horse, it's going to come out from underneath somebody. You're going to have somebody hurt on the side of the road. Some idiot in a truck's going to say, who gives a crap? And they're going to run him over. They're going to hit the horse. Did anybody ever think about that when they were doing all this? I don't think so. I'm opposed to this.
Thank you. Number forty-five. Be sure when you come up to state your name for the record.
My name is Ed Clark. I live on 2366 Three Bar Lane.
We know that.
I'm talking loud for the people who are deaf, like me in the back. I've lived here 43 years, okay? We'll start off with, the property that is not developed yet on Mountain. Now, these people are looking at that property across the street. That's another 88 acres. If we let this go in, what do you think they're going to put across the street? Another trucking outfit. And have any of you gentlemen have been down on Mountain Avenue when Jehovah Witnesses letting out? You can't even get through the traffic light. There's three traffic light, three people can get through the traffic light. Go down there and stand there on Sunday, or Saturday, or any other time they're letting out. Okay, there's another thing is, there's an old saying, if you can't convince them, confuse them. And I think that's what they try to do. Also, I think, gentlemen, if you pass this tonight, and I said this at the Planning Commission, on the seal, we have the head of a horse. I think if we pass this, we ought to put the other end of the horse on it. Thank you.
I'm sorry you have to follow that. You should have brought the llama.
How do you follow that?
Should have brought the llama.
Anyway, my name is Bob Cuervo. I've been in Norco for 20-plus years. And right now, I'm retired, and I drive part-time for Nap Auto Parts. And I go to the warehouse in Mariloma and pick up parts. I used to go 15 freeway to the 60 to head to Wanda, but I can't go that way. There's so much trucks over there, you just can't get through. So now I go over to Harupa. It's three lanes each way, and they're loaded with trucks too. The ones that are going to turn right are in the slow lane. The ones that are going to turn left a mile down the road, they're in the fast lane. And the trucks that are going straight down, they're in the middle lane. And you just have to dodge trucks constantly. It's getting harder and harder. And what's going to happen to some of the arduous streets? They're going to get off here, or they're going to get off on Hidden Valley, they're going to get off on the 91, they're going to probably come down these other side streets. It's going to be a mess. And, you know, these people, all they want to build, 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 build. They don't live here. They don't care. Once they build it, it's gone. They talk about the particulates, and everything they say meets minimum quality requirements. But those requirements are for one truck alone. But when you get 50 trucks here, it's going to be, it's going to double all the requirements. They know, they know this stuff. You know, like the one gentleman said, but figures don't lie, but liars figure. And that's the way here, just blow and smoke up, you know? I think you guys, you know, it's a bad deal for us, for our city. We need something there, but not this. Something that's compatible with our, our way of living. And I hope you guys think our way. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number forty-seven.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Dave Wilson. I just moved to Norco April of last year, bought a house on Three Bar Lane, right across the street from Ed. So I see his horse's ass. I'm going to talk loud. I was in an investment group in Northern Phoenix, Arizona. We had 60 acres at the intersection of Grand and Jomax. We were going to build a big shopping center. We had to get 75% approval of anybody that lived within a half-mile as a resident and have them approve our project before we ever got approved by the Building Commission of Whitman, Arizona. They wanted approval. We had to find the addresses ourselves. They weren't providing for us. We had to dig up the information through county records, find out who the people were that lived there, get their names, get their addresses, get their phone numbers, contact them, do the mailing, get the responses, follow through, prove that we had those informations available so that the council could see it. These guys don't care about what the residents are. They don't live here. They don't care about the horses. They don't care about the streets. They don't care about the light pollution. I'm not going to see stars anymore. I live on Three Bar Lane. My backyard looks at the wall. I just bought the house. In the year 2525, if man is still alive, I'm not going to be able to sell my house, because nobody that would buy it is going to want to buy it in truck traffic zones. I'm holding a list, 15 pages long, of 1,297 vacant buildings in the Riverside County area, available anywhere from 4,000 square feet to 1 billion square feet of land available for sale right now. 15 pages. There's millions of empty buildings in Chino, California, Ontario, California. There's plenty of land up by the airport just waiting for a big building like this that's a lot closer to traffic, that isn't surrounded by houses, horses, people that care. You are lacking tax revenue, and if you put this project through, 20 years from now, nobody's going to want to buy a house here, and that's your biggest tax revenue, is your residential properties. I apologize for everybody in this room, but look around. There isn't anybody here that owns a property that's basically under 50 years old. I'm 57. 20, 30 years from now, I'm going to be dead, and you're going to want buyers to come in and buy my house. And they're not going to want to buy my house with trucks around. The value of the properties are going to drop, 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 drop. You're not going to have any tax revenue left if you pass a project like this, because your revenue comes from residents, from people that own the properties, and nobody's going to want to buy here ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. Number forty-eight.
Hello, Council. Thank you for letting me have this opportunity to speak. My name is Brent Boring, and I'm grateful for Norco and the animal life that they've given me in the sense that they've given me. We have to look at who we are, not who we want to be. We have to look at the fact that we are not built on money. We are built on animals. These animals taught us the keeper's ways. We have the opportunity to look at each other, to have heart for each other, and to stand together. Look at all these people together in this room. You're not going to get that in Riverside. You have that here. I work at a local grocery store. I have people that come in there all day long and tell me how ridiculous this is that these people are coming in here. So I have to say, okay, well, let's look at the evidence. What kind of evidence do we have here? Let's look at their presentation. I don't know about y'all, but I didn't see a single barn in any of those areas that they were developing there, but I saw a lot of their, oh gee, gee whiz, isn't this commercial stuff great? Well, yeah, it really is, and the money's wonderful. But we can find other ways that are going to develop our area, that are going to facilitate our interests. Yeah, it may go in with our, our building stuff of what we want to build, but that's not why we're here. We're not here to build. We're here for the animals, and that is right front, dead, and center of our purposes. It was established like that from the beginning. So if these people want to go and find a wonderful place to build their buildings, then they should go and build their buildings somewhere where people like lots of buildings and they like lots of trucks coming in, but we don't like that. So if these people aren't enough, y'all ought to come over there to the grocery store where I work, because all day long, people are just coming through and just laughing at this stuff. This isn't what we are. And I hope that everybody would look at the fact that we have what we are in our sense because we have the animal ways. We don't have money coming in and using punitive justice in order to get what it wants. And if these people are so attuned to our ways, then perhaps they won't want to use the appeal process in such a huge way. That's how I feel. I feel like they're just going to come in and they're going to do whatever they want and represent their own interests, and they have huge money. What's next? A lawsuit because the city council tells them that they can't come in our area? I think it's better we stop it now, because once they're in here, I guarantee you there's somebody to pay off at every single corner to cut our interests off. And they can do it. They do do it. I can't promise you they will. But use your sense that you were given. You're not somebody who wants something. You're somebody who has something.
Thank you very much. Number forty-nine. Good evening, how are you, sir?
I'm very good. How are you?
Good.
I've been running a little study of my own for the last 15 years. I live directly across the street. And I would encourage anybody who wants to know what the truck traffic's like already from the egg ranch and other trucks that go by, you can hang out in front of my house anytime you want. There's a big empty lot, but there's usually big rigs parked there now. And what the gentleman Keith said, he's eloquent. I just love Keith. Those trucks run those generators all night long. I got two trucks that will keep me awake all night long. Keeps my dog barking. It's driving. We got foot traffic. The deputies here will tell you, I've been broke into three times already this year. What they said, if this thing goes in, I should move. So I mean, you know, I got interviewed by Press Enterprise, and they asked me, you know, some of them all up. And it's like, when do we quit in? Do we just give up? We get in a bad economy, so we just sell out? And these gentlemen, they look tired and bored and everything. I didn't want to be here tonight. Everybody in here didn't want to be here tonight. We've got better things to do. I've got to work tomorrow. You know, so it's like, and when they're all done, like, you know, everybody, I, I, Norco, you guys are eloquent. I mean, you guys have said it great. There's nothing left to say. Because the truth of the matter is, when this is all over, set and done, I started out in 1972 working in Huntington Beach. I put shoes on horses. A lot of people know who I am. I have systematically been receiving back my clientele. I landed in Norco because they say, hey, I'll stay in Norco. At least I'll have horses forever. I can tell you that every one of those barns I worked into down there, I worked in down there, have gone. They're gone. It's not the same. They move in, they say they'll develop around it, and it always starts out like that, and then they're gone. At the end of the day, 15, 20 years from now, are we going to look like Orange Park Acres or Long Beach? Which is it going to be? I mean, that's what this is all about. Are we going to be all hat and no cattle? Are we just going to dress up in cowboy hats and look like Halloween around here? I mean, what the hell, folks? I mean, is this for real? Are we going to be for real? Or are we just going to dress up and talk about it? Because I mean, there's nothing to stay here that's not going to change their mind. They're here to, you know, they're doing their job. But we're the ones that are going to be living here when it's over. I know I will be, and it sucks, because within this economy, I'm already underwater in that house. What do you think the value of that, the lady was so good about that. What do you think the value of that house is going to be if this thing goes in? I've already got these truckers parking there right now. I don't have to wonder what it's going to be like. They already park there and run their motors all night. They already have their hookers showing up, their drug dealers and all their junk. You know, that dog ain't barking at nothing. You know, like I said, I know all the deputies way too well. They've all been to my house. And they, because they think I'm their best friend, just want to hang out there. I mean, they're there because, you know, I got broke into again. This is ridiculous. And we've got a choice here. We can, we can make a stand right now, or we can be the next, you know, area that used to be a horse community. And we're all going to move now, go up to the desert. Where else do we go? Mariloma's already sold out. I mean, you know?
Number fifty. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening. I'm great.
Good.
My name's Alan Sheets. I live at 2193 First, corner of First and Mountain, right across the street. First point, I didn't get a notice that this was going off, which, I know you guys mail it out, I didn't receive one. I heard about it because a lady was passing out flyers. Second thing is, I'm a diesel mechanic, and I don't know if these gentlemen have come across in their estimates or whatever they do with breakdowns. If a diesel truck busts a fuel line, that's 300 gallons on the ground. That's a hazard. That's a health hazard, for one. Hazmat has to come out to clean it up. That's a big cost to the city. If they blow a oil cooler, that's at least nine gallons of oil on the ground. You know, it's, it's, it's a good thing. It can be a good thing. But in this town, it can't be a good thing, because this is a horse town. I have animals. I have dairy goats. The buses that come up and down Mountain, where they park over behind, I don't know where that's at. It scares my goats. They run to the other side of the fence to get away from them. People that come and park beside my property, they run to the other side of the fence. Having all these big trucks go by, that's not going to be good for them. They're pregnant now. If something were to happen with a lot of trucks going by, they could have an abortion, just like a woman. If they're scared, if they're, you know, nervous all the time, that's not good. They lose milk production. I lose babies. That's not good. That damages my income, my lifestyle. This wouldn't help my lifestyle. This wouldn't help my income. And I just want to say that I'm against it, and if you approve it, and if the gentlemen's that are here that agree with it, and if it goes in, I challenge them, I'll trade houses with them. They could win. Thanks.
Thank you. Number fifty-one. I knew you'd do that. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Conrado. I live around the corner from this project that we're never going to come through because we're going to fight for 100%. And each one of you, we elect you to be, to represent us. And I can tell I've got a goosebumps of emotional thing, because we elect you to protect us. We didn't elect you to sell us out. So therefore, I've been living in Norco. I moved from Benwood to here. And my friends from Benwood, they used to say to me, why did you move from heaven to hell? And I said to them, in heaven, I was renting. In hell, I own it. So therefore, then they put a freeway. They give me a freeway. And I said to them, look, I don't have to come to Milligan and Hamner. They gave me a freeway five years later. Then I said, I got the airport 20 minutes away from here. I don't have to go to LAX where I fly out of the country. I go to Macy, which was Robinson at that time, which is Tyler Moore. Anyway, I told all my friends in Benwood, I don't need Benwood anymore because I got Benwood right here. Now, my property, I'm a citizen of this country 25, 30 years ago. And I defined my property. I said, half of this is Norco, and half of this is Santa Cruz, which is a farm of my country in Nicaragua. Anyway, now that I'm here, I prepared one way to talk to you, but when I saw 50 people before me speaking so beautifully, I wasn't going to read what I had prepared. And I'm talking to you in a way that common sense means, you've got to help us. If we put you in power, you have to be back us. We don't want that. Number one, when they developed this hill back in the north or west of...
East, southeast.
Yeah. We discovered through the news that up in that hill, there was some radiation coming on.
I'm very, very sorry, but we have to move on. Thank you, sir.
Well, anyway, everyone said 100%. I say 1,000% against that project.
Thank you.
I'll let all of you.
Number fifty-two.
Hi, I'm number 52. I wasn't going to talk, but I am. You really, I loved your presentation. You really, I, I loved your presentation, I really didn't love it, but I watched. Your presentation regarding the policing, the security, you mentioned the cities Fontana, Rialto, Branche Okugamunga, Ontario, Corona, and Chino. I lived nineteen years in Chino. Norco does not compare to these towns, we are very tiny. These are all huge towns. And Fontana and Rialto really are not stellar communities as far as I'm concerned, so please don't compare those two to Norco. But these communities also have a lot of revenue, they can afford the police, we can't. So how are we going to police this big center, that campus that you wanna put in for San Diego? I am totally against this project. We worked very hard to make this horse town USA, please don't make it truck town.
Thank you. Number fifty-three.
Hi, my name is Robert Carr, and I want to thank the council for allowing us time to address you. People have come up, they've talked about facts and figures and how this is gonna affect Norco and how it's gonna affect other people, and those kids, and the schools, and everything. Most of what we talked about tonight is perception. It's perception of their point of view, perception of our point of view. There are a few facts to deal with in this, but one thing else we have to consider, perception, is the outside. People who don't live in Norco, people that wanna come to Norco to do things. Speaking of which, we have this whole minor project called Silver Lakes that nobody's talked about. And what is all this gonna do to that? When we have to deal, the people that come to Silver Lakes, bring their kids for soccer, they have all this pollution in the air, they're gonna have all this additional traffic to deal with, what about the businesses that wanna come to Norco because of Silver Lakes? And now they're gonna have to put up with this, and the traffic, and everything else that is perceptually gonna happen? I think the city council needs to stand back and take a look at perception, and how it affects Norco, how it affects Silver Lakes, and the potential for losing that revenue and that bonus to Norco, that we've worked so hard in the past to come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, number fifty-four. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, great, how are you?
I'm good.
Thank you for the time. My name is Mark Anderson, and I wanna first and foremost say, I didn't find out about this until my wife brought something to me about a week ago and said, we need to go to this meeting. So I didn't have a clue that this was taking place in the community that I've come to grow and love and build the dreams of my family and myself. As I've sit here, I wasn't gonna speak, because that's what I do for a living, so I said, I'm gonna let everybody else do this, but I just caught the passion in this room of the people that live in this community, and that are here for their, not only their dreams, but the dreams of their children, the dreams of their animals. And I stand here today, my wife, and I'll finish this with a story, a couple stories. I'm a former Olympic athlete, the gathlon champion for America, and when I had the opportunity to go move to my dream location, I chose Norco, traveled the world, could've lived anywhere. And I chose Norco because of the Norco that we live in today. As this has been brought to my attention, and my wife, I said, this cannot be, this cannot be the future of our lives, of our home, of our children. I have a daughter who has the genes of her mother and her father, that is out at the Norco High School, hopefully training to become maybe a future Olympian. But I will tell you this, if this takes place in this town, and this goes through, my daughter will be on that Norco track, nor will her father be out there training some other kid along with her to maybe have a dream become a reality for them. Somebody had made mention of Toby Gerhart, you know, we sometimes take that lightly. But I wonder what would've happened had something like this been in the air? And I'm not just talking about a health issue for one individual, I'm talking about for whether you're an athlete, whether you're a person who is retiring someday, there are issues here that certainly must be looked at. And I'm here as just one individual, one dream, one family, but together, a team, T-E-A-M, together each of us achieve more. And together we stand, everybody with their own dreams, their own goals, their own plans. I don't believe anybody in this room has come here with a selfish motive. I don't even believe maybe the people presenting this maybe have a selfish motive, I'm not sure if they do, I can't say that. But I can say this, somebody had made mention regarding people moving, if this takes place in this community, I have a home that I have built, I've invested my money into, I've been here while the Whitey Labs went, whatever it did, I wanted to move then, if this takes place, I'll tell this committee, I will move from this town, and I will take my home, my family, everything I have, and I'm with somewhere else to train my daughter for her future. I hope that you will stand up for all of us, because we care about this city, this community, and it's ours. Thank you.
Uh, I believe this is the last speaker, fifty-six. Two more, number fifty-five. You're fifty-five.
Good evening. I wasn't going to talk tonight either, but I love Norco. My wife was raised here, we moved here many years ago, I just recently retired a special education teacher for Corona Norco District. And I've worked with a lot of medically fragile kids in my career. My wife teaches just down the road from where this project will take place, in Victus Bowers School, where we have most of our very medically fragile children in our district, some that come to school with oxygen tanks. Now, particulars that are in the air, I don't think they have the know-how to stop at a certain point and not proceed to these children. There's also an elementary school, a middle school nearby, not to mention all the kids that go out for walks and take short field trips, walk with mobility specialists, go out and exercise with physical therapists in the area. There are just so many things that are, that are wrong with this project. There, there's been, there've been so many studies done, the project presentation was beautiful. It was shameful, but it was beautiful. You know, there, there are so many things that are wrong here, there are so many correlations between ADD and, and what appears to be autism, even though that category's being changed now, that are directly related to the environment. We can't ignore that. This is unhealthy. I've worked, I retired out of John F. Kennedy School down the road, worked with Dr. Davis, I know at one of the presentations in the past, someone said they knew Dr. Davis, and she enjoyed pushing forward this project. I knew, I know Dr. Davis. I know her late husband. I knew him very well, a pediatric allergist. How much do you think he'd be in favor of putting children in harm's way? This is a bad project, and I hope you turn it down. Thank you.
Number fifty-seven. Fifty-six. Last one, last but not least. Good evening, sir.
Thanks for saying last but not least, appreciate that. Hi, my name is Greg Donaldbach, mayor, city council. Uh, my wife Barbara went to Norco High School here, she's basically raised here, we raised our five children in this community, uh, they all play major sports. Our oldest son is an Air Force pilot now. One of the things he learned here in Norco was to love his country and love his God and love his people that he surrounds himself with, and we're pleased to have raised our children in this community. But we're also grateful for the house that we own. We knew when we bought the house that one day it might be bulldozed down. And we pray that we could raise our family here long enough to raise our family here. And just like my parents' home originally, the Santiago Estate tract that you allowed to be built, and after four hundred homes were built there, the roofs were counted and the Stater Brothers moved in, now we had a busy second street, and then when the freeway came in, we had even a busier second street, and it was called Progress, and we lived with that. But I look at the, the work that the Alair Group has done, and our own city planning department has done, and I don't wanna trash any professional work, I am grateful for Steve King and the planning department that approved this project for the city council's consideration. Just like they approved the project for the Dutch Windmill that the planning commission turned down, but you, the city council, approved. You have the authority tonight to do what is right. And even though there might be one percent of our city's population in this room, there are a lot of people that appreciate trucks. Everything that we wear tonight has been brought in by a truck, what we're drinking tonight's been brought in by a truck. When I go shopping with Stater Brothers, those trucks that go by our house, they bring my food in. It has to be brought in by a truck, I don't know how else we're gonna do this. I know that the city has a great atmosphere, and we do love it here, but this corridor is blighted now from twenty-five years of the Norco Egg Ranch, and it's getting worse, city council, and you're in charge now of the redevelopment of that area, to turn it from a blighted area to something we can be proud of. And I'm just asking you tonight to consider all that you've heard from the Alair Group, someone who's voluntarily knocked on our city door to bring business to this town and jobs. The paper has said that the warehouse jobs basically are starting off at three thousand dollars a year. Now, I know that doesn't sound like a lot of money, but to a kid that's just starting out, trying to learn, we have jobs coming here, construction jobs coming here. Many of you tonight mentioned that you're truck drivers. You know, we don't wanna play the NIMBY game, because we have to live somewhere, and these trucks have to live somewhere. So city council, please consider...
Thank you very, very, very much, thank you for your time. That was the last speaker, I will bring it back to council. Would anybody like to volunteer to start? All right, I'll pick somebody. Mr. Higgins. Do you have a microphone?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I think everybody I've talked to, I encourage them to come and talk and listen and express your opinion for or against. And I think that's important for a community, because the citizens are obviously the backbone of any community, particularly Norco, which is an animal-keeping community that we all love and, and we wanna maintain. I look back at the people that came up and talked, and some of them, I key in on words, I key in on people that know more than I do, because I don't know everything, and I don't profess to know everything. CCAEJ, I'm a member of that organization, and I followed them since Stringfellow and Miraloma. And I asked them to come to the original presentation over at the community center, because I wanted them involved in it. I wanted them to bring their knowledge and tell the community whether it was a good thing or a bad thing. I've listened to people that live right across the street from this, and would I wanna live right across the street from it? The answer is, no, I wouldn't. Because I don't think my chickens would like it. And truly, I don't, because I give the eggs away, but I don't want anything to disturb the egg production, even though I don't like eggs, and most of the time I don't eat them. Now, property owners' rights. I've said it many, many, many times, property owners, they have a right to sell and make money. They have a right to look at something, and hopefully it'll fit what the interest of the people around the development is going to enjoy and use. I work for a construction outfit. We hire about three hundred and twenty-five people, most of that is downtown in LA, I fight traffic on that ninety-one for anywhere from an hour and a half to two hours. I would love to see those trucks off that road and put on the sixty freeway. But the plan is, is building another freeway right next to the sixty freeway, not on top of it. Which is another issue, because it's gonna destroy a lot of people's homes. Do I like the project? I like what it'll do. Money-wise, it's not gonna benefit us that much, as somebody said, most of it's gonna go to the county and the state anyway. Two point seven million dollars of transportation fee, that's TUMF fees, that every developer's gotta pay. And, and it goes to building roads and things like that, so, yeah. And we're using TUMF fees to widen Hamner Avenue and things like that. So is it a benefit to us? Oh, yeah, eventually it's a benefit to us. But I look across the people that talked tonight, one lady, Franny, I think, was there Fran or something like that, and she got up and she talked about the specific plan, she talked about how this fits into the specific plan, or doesn't fit into the specific plan. She made a lot of sense, I talked to Steve King about it, uh, intermission, because it, it, it goes to some of the conversations that I've had with Steve in the past. Is the egg ranch a condition to use? Is the warehouse a condition to use in that gateway specific plan? All of this, we're going to weigh tonight, each of us in our own hearts and our own minds, the benefits, the pros and cons of its, is it going to be good for us? And that's what I look at, is it going to be good for us? Was the freeway good for us? Did it get us to where we wanted to go? Was the auto mall good for us? Did it, did it increase our abilities to do things with the sales tax? Or did we rely so much on that without diversifying that when that fell, then Norco fell as well? I look at this and I, and I think in that same perception of, is it a fit? Is it gonna be a benefit? Are we gonna rely on it too much, or are we not? Then it becomes an issue of, I was on the planning commission, I was chair of the planning commission, long before I ever sat on council, in, what was it, ninety-nine, I think, the first time, or something like that. So I was on the planning before then. Invariably, that planning commission comes with decisions, their goal is to look at a specific plan and see if a development fits that specific plan to the letter. They have no other direction, that's what they're supposed to do. I rely heavily on them to make those decisions for me, and I said it at the last council meeting, I do not have the time, I looked at this stuff, I went over it, I highlighted how many parking spots are they gonna have, how much red curb are they gonna have to eliminate the parking on the streets? But I've got a whole bunch of planning commissioners that looked at something individually, and they said no. Why did they say no? They said no because in their understanding of the specific code, understanding of the gateway specific plan, it did not fit. I looked at that specific plan, and it doesn't fit. It's too big. Was the egg ranch ever included in on that? No, it wasn't. It was grandfathered in because the egg ranch was there prior to the city's incorporation. It was grandfathered into the specific plan, it was never conditioned as a specific plan use. So somebody can argue about how many trucks that egg ranch produces that we've allowed through the years, and I think in the back of my mind, doesn't make any difference, because it wasn't conditioned used in the gateway specific plan. So that's the things that I look at. I've got a whole bunch of questions that I still haven't answered, but I've got a whole bunch that was answered by what the people have told me that live there. bunch that was answered by what the people have told me that live there. That's what I vote my basis on and my heart on, is I don't live there. I listen to the people that do, that this is going to impact, and that's the way I vote.
I quit it on the stand. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming tonight. It's a pleasure to see such a huge crowd out. I wish we could get this type of audience in all of our city council meetings. What a great day it would be in Norco if you could get that many out. And so, thank you for coming, and a lot of you said a lot tonight, and I don't disagree with a lot of what you said. I'm not here to step on anybody's toes. I've heard some things that said it would ruin our streets. Hidden Valley was constructed, I think, in 1997 to include truck traffic, and I don't believe we've had any problems with Hidden Valley Street over the last 10 or 12 years. So, if this project were to be approved, all of the infrastructure down there would be rebuilt or built up to the standards that the truck traffic would not tear up the streets. And the city of Norco certainly does not have the money to build that infrastructure, and it's in bad need of some upgrade down there. Some said it's not the highest and best use. Mr. Ed Clark was one of them that I talked to previously, and so I said, "Well, Mr. Clark", I said, "Do you think we could get Fashion Island down in Newport Beach and maybe get them to come out here and build a 100-acre shopping center there so we could have a lot of retail sales?" And he says, "You know, that's not a place for a retailer. They wouldn't come here", you know? And so, even though we'd all like to see something there that brings in a lot of retail sales, we know it's not going to happen, not at least in my lifetime, maybe. I don't see anybody that young. But so, we're not going to attract a major shopping center there with a major anchor that will fill it up with other stores. Opening this project, some had said would disturb the neighbors, the horses, and the children. I looked at the project, and it looked to me like that they went to Great Lakes to protect the horses and the children, and gave a much better neighborhood to live in than what's there now. You know, I have a friend that works for one of those pest control people, and he's down there constantly, and he's at a lot of the houses on the opposite side of the street. They have a huge pest problem down there, trying to keep the rodents out. And the Norco egg ranch has been there a long, long time, and I think this is a lot about property rights, too. Mr. Harry Eisen's been there, and I believe that, I don't believe there's ever been a nonprofit organization or anybody in need that ever went there for eggs or for a donation that he didn't help them out. He's been one of the best tenants, like Louis Vandermoor, been one of the best tenants and property owners we've ever had in the city of Norco. And I believe this man is, he's 95 years old, he's got cancer, and he's getting ready to move on to the next level in a few years. And so, I think he has a right to sell his property. I think he has property rights, and I think he went out and found some very good people that have presented a very, very nice project. And having said that, we're all against it, but all they're asking for is a site map and a tentative tract map. If we were to approve the site map and the tentative tract map, then these people from Alire could go out and solicit some of those people that you saw on the board up there earlier tonight, or some new ones. Amazon.com is right now looking for a place to live. They can't go talk to Amazon.com because they don't know how many more years they're going to have to fight to find a place to put something like that. But if they had it already approved, they had a site map, a tentative tract, so they could go and sign a contract with these people, then that's when we get down to the real negotiations of putting the conditions and restrictions. And the planning commission put somewhere around 90, 90 conditions on this project, and these people agreed to it. When we get to the other level, if this is approved, we get to the other level, you get to do that all over again. It gets to go through, back through all, we get to meet the tenant, and certainly if there's a tenant there that wants to take one of those larger buildings, and you show up like this, and you don't want that tenant there because he's got too many trucks, I don't think he'd want to spend his money in this town. I think you'll get tenants that you want, and it will be an asset to this town. Certainly, I wouldn't have a problem living down there across from it if I lived down there. I have, my daughter lived down there for a while on Pacific Avenue, and Pacific Avenue will look 100 times better after this project, if this project were approved.
If we could really...
Yeah, I would really appreciate it.
I took care of it, Harvey. Yeah, please, 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 let him speak.
I wasn't going to step on anybody's toes, and I appreciate that same respect. Thank you very much. But I wouldn't have a problem living down there with it, where it's at. They talk about the exhaust from the diesel trucks. We're just about into the tier three, or we're just about there where the, from 2007 on, the diesel trucks, the particulates, they put out a lot less than a car. I drive a diesel pickup truck. It puts out more diesel fumes than these trucks would put out that would be coming there. We talk about...
Please, please, thank you.
We talk about all of the trucks. We don't know how many trucks. There was an article in the paper the other day about Skechers was moving from Ontario out to Moreno Valley, I believe, and they, 1.7 million square feet, and they have about 80 trucks a day coming in and out of there. So, wouldn't it be nice to have something like that? Skechers or a bigger company? No. I understand that some of you out there don't want anything there, you know? And so, and that's your right. But Mr. Eisen has a right. There's people in Norco that I know that are in this room tonight that have a vacant piece of property next to them. It's called residential property. One of these days, they're going to want to build a house on that property or build something on that property. And they don't want anybody coming in and saying, "Well, we don't want that, or that house is too big. I've got a single-story house. Can't build a two-story house." You know, people have property rights, and we have the right. We have the best of both worlds here. We get, he gets to sell his property, and we get to condition the property to what we want it, but we can't do that until you give them a site map and a tentative tract. Then that's when the real work starts. And we can just turn those down without any reason. Tonight, we need a real good reason to turn it down. And I haven't heard a real good reason. The planning commission's denial of the property project because it's too intense is not part of the code that we have, that we can rely on to turn it down. A lot of you out there voted for me. And when you voted for me, thank you. A lot of you out there voted for me, and when you voted for me, I took an oath. I raised my right hand, and I swore I uphold the Constitution of the United States and the laws of this land. And I'm not going to vote no on something if it meets or exceeds all our rules and regulations. If we don't like those rules and regulations, and we live here in Norco Horsetown, USA, and I've lived here 18 years, and I fight like, I'll fight till I die to protect this for my granddaughter who's six years old and been riding a horse since she was two years old by herself. Now, if you think for one minute I would sell Norco down the road, you're wrong. This project, we can look at it later, but this man has a right to sell his property, and this developer has a right to bring it forward. Then we can look at it. You know, I wish their planning commission would have come up with something, you know, that some of you could hang your hat on. I read through what the, and I know the planning commission did a lot of work because they couldn't get it done in one night, and they had to put it to another night, and they spent a lot of time, they listened to a lot of input, and some of the, and I've been through it, and I've heard some of this stuff around town, but I've read what they said here. The reasons for denial are based on findings that the project is not consistent with the policies of the gateway-specific plan because it is too intense of a land use, given the location. Well, that's not a reason to turn it down.
Excuse me, Harvey, Harvey, just one second. Excuse me. Sincerely, I want this to be as fair a hearing as possible. Again, I want every bit of respect for everybody's point of view. Please, I'm asking you to give Councilman Sullivan, who is a duly-elected official, the respect of hearing him out. Please, thank you.
There was quite a few people spoke here tonight, 50, 55, 56 people. Only about four people spoke in favor of the project. I thought Mr. Rob Swindell hit it right on the head that the, our air quality here in Norco is a lot better than it's been in a long, long time. And you talked about Toby Giar, and the gentleman had talked about his kids wouldn't be playing and going on to the Olympics if this project goes in. If this project goes in, we're not going to have the diesel fumes, the particulates coming out. You want to know where the particulates are at? The particulates and the dust is in our horse, in our backyards from the manure, from the chicken feces. That's where the particulates is. If you want to get into particulates that are dangerous to this city, the particulates coming from those diesel engines are not the hazard that is going to destroy Norco's livestock. And I see that it's going to be hard to finish up here, so I'll just leave you with one quote here, and I'm going to quote an American humorist, Mr. Will Rogers. He said, his quote was, "Sometimes you have to go out on a limb because that's where the fruit is." Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Berwin?
What's that? Hope this doesn't work? Okay, there's a lot of issues to talk about here. First of all, thank everybody for coming, and thank the Alire group for coming, and you did have a good presentation there. Your project on paper looks real good and everything is... One thing I want to ask Steve King, on the, inside that project that says private street, don't we have an ordinance in town against having private streets? I know there's one got built several years ago, but is that a street or is that going to be a driveway inside that project?
It's just a driveway. It was mis-titled as a street, but it's just a driveway, like going into a shopping center.
Okay, I'll get that cleared up. But the first thing then would be the number of trips, trucks. The figures I got, there'd be a truck about every three minutes or so coming in or out. And I did my own little traffic study. I took a smaller version of a semi, overgrown pickup truck with an eight-horse trailer. That's pretty long. That's almost as long as a semi. I went down the freeway to Second Street one morning about 7:30, got up on the ramp, or got partially off on the ramp. There was a semi at the signal down below and four cars in front of me at the light at Hamner and Second, excuse me. There was a semi there and about seven or eight cars behind it. The left lane, left-turn lane was full. Now, it takes about, for a semi to go across the intersection when he starts from a stop, about three or four cars can go while he's going. If he's turning left, six cars can go, about that. I mean, they can't help it. That's the speed of their rig. But by the time I got off of the 15 freeway and I got to Mountain Street was nearly 19 minutes. Now, that's with two trucks. I sat there for a few minutes. I turned around, and I didn't make an illegal U-turn, Ross, I was on the dirt lot over there. But I came back out on the Second. There was a semi, oh, he was probably two cars from the light there at Hamner, but there was three of those little school buses. By the time I got to the left-turn lane to go north on the freeway again was 17 minutes. I got up to Sixth Street, I turned around, and went back down to Hidden Valley. Well, when I got to that ramp, there was two semis, even though it says no trucks, there was two semis on that ramp and several cars. They both turned right, the semis did. One gets to the light on Hamner, he turns left and heads into Corona, which I think that's illegal to do, but he did it. The other truck went to Albertson's. I still had all these cars in front of me. It took me about 15, 16 minutes to get to First and Mountain, Second and Mountain over there. When I turned around and came back, I only had one semi in front of me, and it took 13 minutes to get back to the northbound ramp on there. So, if you've got two or three trucks that's taken up all your time to go, you get on Second Street, and I feel for Gino and all the other residents over there because I don't know how they get out of their driveways at times. The cut-through traffic from River Road up Second Street, the people that live on the side streets over there is trying to get in. You throw in the mix of trucks, the school buses, which I think run about three times a day, you're sitting in a lot of traffic like you're on the 91 freeway. You don't go anywhere. Then there's three different times in the day, and maybe four, when you've got the traffic coming off of the freeway to go to Hamner, to go to the college. You throw that in the mix, you might as well get out and walk or ride a horse. But that's the first issue I have, is all the extra traffic. And like I said, I feel for you people living over there in that area that, I know you're impacted now with a lot of different traffic and everything. You throw all these trucks in there, you might as well just stay at home. The other issue is the health issues that was brought up. That's very, that's a big concern. And I live over in Old Town, close to the river, and less than half a mile from the 15 freeway. Well, I go outside every morning to feed my horses at 5:30. Some morning, it's damp. When it's damp, all the diesel fumes are hanging on the ground like propane does. You walk out, now, don't do it when it's raining, but now tomorrow, if it's not raining in the morning, that'll be like a little fog in that area. The diesel fumes coming off of the freeway plus coming off of the trucks and cars and things that go down Sixth Street every night, it settles in there. So, it's not, it's not healthy, and I'm in kind of a, well, I don't have a lot of truck, don't have truck traffic over there, but you get in this over here, you're going to just cover the whole community up with it. Another thing that raised a red flag, inside that compound over here, they were talking about that they would have to build a bridge from the trucking unit over to the commercial unit, and that somebody would have to pay for that, the city or whoever. You also talked about Caltrans wouldn't pay to widen the ramp off of the freeway onto that. Well, the city can't pay for that. We've been looking for money for a year to design a new bridge to go across the Santa Ana River on Hamner, working with Eastvale and everybody else on that. So, I don't see that that's any advantage of us to have to spend a bunch of money to bring these rigs in. And property rights? Yes, sir. Everybody has property rights. The seller has property rights, but I'll guarantee you the residents have property The seller has property rights, but I'll guarantee you the residents have property rights to protect their homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I just want to start off by thanking all of you. You know, I go, I've been on city council now for eight years and I go, when I go to regional events, conferences or whatever, I go to League of Cities, WRCOG. I always say that I'm Kathy Asavito from Norco Horsetown, USA. And lots of times people tell me they don't remember my name, they don't remember my city, but they remember that I'm from Horsetown, USA. And I'm so very proud of that. And then they ask me about the town because they're intrigued and they say, oh, it's the horses that make Norco special. And I tell them, no, the horses do make us special, but really makes us special is the people. The people and the passion in this town is what kept this town to be what it is today. And you guys have proved to me again and again, but especially tonight, how much this town means to all of us, how special it is. And me as a city council person will do everything in my power to maintain Horsetown, USA. In my struggle to maintain Horsetown, USA during these economic challenging times, we have a vision of, we've had a strategic plan for quite a few years now, which is to develop this town as a rural atmosphere, as a destination point. Clearly I do not see a truck distribution center in that vision. I do, I absolutely think that the planning commission was right on both accounts. I think that Alira group did an absolutely fabulous presentation and if I was in the market for a truck distribution center, I think that they would do the best job of probably anyone that ever could. I do take a little bit of offense as comparing us to the other cities like some of you do. We are clearly unique in that not only with our animals and the health hazards and our roads that don't fit with this kind of a project. This town's, while you saw them lined up to Norco neighborhoods, our neighborhood is so unique compared to any of those other neighborhoods. For example, even the Second Street off-ramp, which would be the main archerier, has three schools on Second Street that all have to come in and out of that Second Street. And then when this gateway specific plan was done, we didn't even have the college there that has 10,300 students there coming on and off that off-ramp. I think that our forefathers did their due diligence back in 1991 with this gateway specific plan. I agree with Wendy and Pat, who I've also read it with a fine tooth comb. Clearly, this is not, this project is not in compliance with the gateway specific plan and if it was to be redone, I think it would show it even more non-compliance because of the college and the other things that have been added. It also, Second Street crosses, our true economic engine is the auto mall and I'm concerned about the impact of that because that is what brings in money to the city. It's true, we call it a little bit of an structural imbalance that we've been too dependent on the auto mall, but we've been ready to diversify. I think Silver Lakes, I want to talk about that in a minute, is definitely going to be a solution to our destination plans here for Norco. Again, in talking about the gateway specific plan, it does, it says light industrial, it does talk about, nothing about moving freight. They talk about the intensity being too strong. I truly agree. 349 truck, freight truck bays is certainly, the intent is a large, large project, doesn't comply in what I read in that specific plan of being anything of that magnitude. I do think that we do have property rights and I think that a project that would be more in compliance with the gateway specific plan would be the perfect plan. So I'm not in support of this project. I feel it's not in compliance with the gateway specific plan. I feel that it will jeopardize Horsetown, USA and our goals. I also, just in rebuttal of the few people that were in support of the project, jobs, they're important to our residents. Jobs don't benefit the city and I'm here representing the city as your council person and jobs don't help the city at all in balancing the budget. And when I think about the kind of jobs that, the $42,000 a year, you know, Norco, I'm proud to say is, we have a high income. The people who live in Norco, which is the people that I represent, are pretty much a bedroom community. They don't, they wouldn't be working for that amount of money. They couldn't afford their horses that way. But let me tell you, there's going to be a lot of jobs that will be conducive to the Norco residents down at Silver Lakes. Hundreds and hundreds of jobs there that will bring, the right, the jobs that will be for our youth that have been raised in this community. And so I think I just want you to know that all of the people that spoke in opposition of the project, I...